County Public School Board to order our public hearing about the budget and our District E candidate interviews. Would you please rise for the reciting of the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Our first item on the agenda tonight is the adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We have an agenda. Tonight, we are here for a public hearing for the initial budget proposal for the year I know that there are signups that have been made. Do we have those signups already? The way this will work, I will call your name. If you will come to the podium and state your name and your address, you then may begin to address the board. Please take a note of a couple of things. There is not a time limit tonight, so you have as much time to speak as you would like. Also note that the board will not respond to anything, so if you ask a question, we will not respond. It's just for our informational to hear what you, the public, have to say and those of you who are on staff. So with that said, we'll get started.
Mr. President, can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
Since we have several people, if you could call two names, so the next person can be ready to come?
I actually only have five people signed up right now on the list. So, okay, so here we'll go. We'll start right now. Our first up is Corinne Meadows.
Hi, my name is Corinne Meadows. Did you want my home address? I live on Maple Drive in Christiansburg. I actually typed out a speech because I'm a talker and I was informed that there was a three-minute time limit, so I'm just going to read what I've already written. I have more than three minutes' worth of things to say about the budget because I guess you'll probably figure it out as I read. I teach special education at Christiansburg Primary School, and as a special education teacher, I am here speaking to you in support of the instructional assistants with whom I work. These people are critical to the achievement of many students. I can write IEPs, design instructional programs, advocate for students, attend trainings, implement new initiatives, all those things that I do at work every day. But if I can't depend on my instructional assistants that I work with to carry out these things on a daily basis, the whole special education program for which I work really hard would collapse. Additionally, instructional assistants have to have a certain level of education and training to even do their jobs, and not only that, but the Special Education Department has invested thousands of dollars and many hours to train people to work with children in the most effective ways possible. Now, the bad part and the reason that I'm here is that these employees who work 32 hours a week are losing their pay incentives, which I'm sure that you all know. I can't do anything about the law that says health insurance must be at least offered to this group of employees, and I'm not even sure how exactly it's written. I do, however, think that maybe when you're considering these budgetary issues that you might need a little more perspective. These instructional assistants may be forced to quit over the abysmal pay that they will be receiving with the new budget the way that it's written. They knew when they were hired that health insurance, as other benefits, were not going to be an option, but that a monthly bonus as an incentive would be to use towards benefits or other bills. One person with whom I work gets a $500 per month incentive. She will lose it in exchange for the free health insurance, in which she is not interested at this point, because after the new budget takes effect, the $500 bonus will go away, and at that point, she will make $900 per month after taxes. She has a $600 rent, which would leave her $300 to live on, and at least with her free health insurance coverage, she'll be able to go to the hospital for a small copay and get a glucose drip to help her out when she starves to death or suffers from hypothermia because she can't afford to heat her apartment. So it's no wonder that people are thinking of leaving. They literally can't afford to stay in this position without that incentive. And then what happens to this group of paraeducators who are very highly trained? They're replaced by people who start from the ground up, and if people are worried about student achievement, I can't imagine what that would do to student achievement. So clearly, making this budget is difficult, and there are no easy answers, and I don't even have any suggestions, and I hate that because I'm a person that likes suggestions. But I don't have any suggestions, except that we need to preserve the personnel as our most valuable resource that we have. We need a budget that is stripped down to essentials in order to scrape together funding for personnel and for safety issues. There are luxury items in the budget, such as the iPads, and they might have to go, and it seems unnecessary to spend so much money on iPads because they are one-third paid for with a grant. Technology is a great tool, but if my personal house were being foreclosed on, you'd better believe that I would say goodbye to my satellite and I would say goodbye to my smartphone. We can't even afford to worry about school start times, I don't think, because it costs money, and that's extra money that could be used for other things. I don't know what the answers are, but I do know that I can do my part to speak to you, to lobby the state legislature, to fund us the way that we should be funded, and I can try to give my instructional assistants a positive work environment, but only you can ensure that they can get a wage that they can live on. Thank you.
Next on the list is Joan Farron-Cough.
I too am not a public speaker, so I will be reading some notes that I put together. I'm a better writer than I am a reader, so I will read this to you.
Your name and address?
Oh, my address is 3320 Elk Creek Drive, Christiansburg. Okay. I too would like to address the loss of the incentive program for the 30-plus-hours employees. I'm here to represent all of the part-time aides and teachers assistants at Auburn Elementary School who work over 30 hours a week. I believe the following is true of those in a lot of other schools and the county as well. Let me introduce myself. My name is Joan Farron-Cough. I am employed as a special ed aide at Auburn Elementary School and have been in this position for 20 years. My current gross salary is $1,887 a month, which includes the additional incentive amount of $520 each month. This incentive represents almost 30% of my present salary. Without this, I would gross $1,367 a month or $342 a week without taxes taken out. Our responsibilities as special ed aides require us to handle every possible situation that may arise with children who are challenged, along with preparing lessons, teaching the children every subject. We modify lessons and prepare materials so they are on the child's level. Handling severe attention issues and emotional outbursts is very common when working with these children. We have all worked with physically challenged children, children with Down Syndrome, cerebral palsy, blind children, and many spectrums of autistic children as well. Along with these responsibilities, we have changed diapers, we have potty-trained children and fed them whenever that is needed, and sometimes if food needed special preparation before we would feed them. We also help classroom teachers whenever possible and with other kids who struggle, who don't qualify for special ed services. We are a tremendous help to classroom teachers, and we are always told how vital we are to their students in classroom. We also support OT, PT, and speech therapists who service our children. Many of them qualify for these services and receive them once or twice a week for 30 minutes. We implement these services every day with these children. As a county that boasts of inclusion of special needs children, it is imperative to have quality employees who can teach them. It is very common to find us at work earlier and later than our contracted hours. We do whatever it takes to prepare our kids. We obviously don't work for the big salary. We love these kids and love to see them flourish, grow, and learn. We teach them social skills as well, as many of them have a difficulty in this area. We give so much of ourselves to these kids and are very committed to them. Many teachers and parents would attest to the statements I have just made. I truly feel that we represent the backbone of the school. We give a tremendous support that is required to include special needs children in our classrooms. You may think that we're little people, but we're like those little vertebrae in the spine. You take a few of those away, and you are going to collapse that back. So we are the supporters. I know that taking the incentive money away from us will sadly result in many valuable aides having no choice but to leave and get jobs that pay more, because no one can live on that salary. Our salary is at poverty level according to government pay scales. We can't afford to have this additional money taken away. In all honesty, I'm sure at this point you would agree that we should be paid a lot more for what we do. This extra money was originally set up as a retirement fund in 1998. We were given a selection of agencies to choose from to invest our money. The name changed to Incentive Fund a few years later, when we could opt to have it put into our monthly paycheck instead. We have received this additional money for 15 years and consider it part of our salary at this point, because it's 15 years. Some of us truly do use this money to prepare for retirement, and others just need every penny to live on. To take this from us now would be so unfair and really inhumane. We all have worked for many years at AES, ranging from 12 to 20 years of service. We were never eligible for insurance benefits, therefore, most of us already have insurance, policies through our husbands, personal insurance policies, and so most of us do not need the insurance. There may be a few who would be interested in the county, but I don't know anybody at AES that want it. It's just not right to take our incentive money, which represents a third of our salary and has for 15 years, to help pay for the required insurance the county has to provide. It's just not right. Please consider all of this before making a decision or voting on the proposed budget. It is detrimental to our community, schools, and children, and it will affect all of these greatly in the county if the county loses many of its finest, experienced aides who give sacrificially every day for our kids and make inclusion successful in our county. There will be collateral damage for sure, and I would hate to see that happen, especially to our precious children. It will definitely affect them. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me and for your serious consideration of all of I have stated. We all love our jobs, and every child we have the privilege to teach. Please let us keep this incentive so we can continue doing so. Thank you.
Next up is Robbie Jones.
My name is Robbie Jones. I live at 996 Cole Holler Road in Christiansburg, Virginia. I am president of the Montgomery County Education Association, as well as representative for the custodians at the Superintendent's Advisory Committee. I'm also a head custodian at Christiansburg Middle School. Tonight, I'm speaking to you on the proposed removal of the part-time incentives that affect many support staff employees. Educational support professionals are the first and last employees to see the students in the school community. Through their various careers, they touch the lives of students and ensure student success, and each student's success requires every resource available in the school community. MCPS support staff are an invaluable resource. They are the bus drivers, the cafeteria workers, the paraeducators, administrative assistants, custodians, maintenance employees, and nurses. The National Education Association President Lily Elkins-Garcia, who started her career in education as a school cafeteria employee, said, "Education support professionals are critical members of the education workforce. They are public education's unsung heroes." I do understand, in the beginning, the incentive was intended for employees who, under MCPS standards, did not qualify for single subscriber insurance or VRS retirement. Unfortunately, the years of not receiving a salary increase, coupled with the cost of living on the rise, support staff were faced with difficult and personal decisions on how to make ends meet. For many, the incentive have become a part of their salary that they may use to support their family in difficult financial times. I have received many emails and phone calls. I have run into probably about 20 people in Walmart. My husband refuses to let me go in public anymore regarding this possible cut. My paper doesn't want to work today. I am, to give you an idea of how this will affect your employees, imagine losing 20 to 40% of your monthly income. One employee who contacted me said their income was $1,200 a month. With this cut, it will be $700 a month. And if I may, can I get everyone who this will affect, please stand. Take a look at the employees behind me tonight. This is just a handful of the people it will affect. They give your students 110% every day, and they provide the basic needs for your students. The minimum they deserve is a living wage, and I will tell you tonight that $700 a month is not a living wage, so I ask you, do not take away their incentive. Thank you.
Next is, I think it's Ethel Brown? Earl, I'm sorry. Earl Brown.
Ms. Blackburn-Lemson, the board. My name is Earl Brown. I reside at 502 Woodbine Drive in Blacksburg, Virginia. Budget time is always difficult times, and I understand it, and the thing about the incentive, I just want to say that I hope that's not taken away, because we have components that sometimes they just kind of get overshadowed by certain things. All these people here that are talking about the incentive, it all boils down to one big thing, which is our students here, which that includes transportation to get our students to and from schools. We have some fantastic facilities. We've recently opened up some great new schools that are technologically advanced. We have super teachers in Montgomery County that turn out some excellent students. Then we have our great facilities, and we have our maintenance department that has to upkeep of those facilities. Once you put it there, you have to keep it up. Things change all the time, as far as technology goes on and so forth, and as far as the thing that I want to say about the budget is, I know that probably there's going to be cuts. There's no money here, no money there. You have to rob Peter to pay Paul and so forth, but I just want you to keep in mind that we do it all for the students, because without the students, I don't think any of us would be here. So just think about the students, what their needs are, and the people that are providing those needs, and what those people need to continue providing those needs. That's all I'd like to say. Thank you.
The last signup I have is Elaine Blackford. Blackford?
I live at 1219 Stafford Drive in Christiansburg, Virginia. I wasn't really planning on speaking tonight either, but I have written an email to Mrs. Blackburn and have also sent it to each of the board members. I would like to read that this evening for the benefit of the people here who have not already read it or heard it, and I do have a few comments afterwards. I'm a special education para professional at Price's Fork Elementary. After reading your email about your proposed budget, I felt compelled to write to you. Your proposal calls for discontinuing the part-time employee incentive program for hourly employees who work 30-plus hours a week in order to offer health insurance to those employees. Discontinuing that program will result in a 28% pay cut for me and other para professionals who have worked for Montgomery County Public Schools 10 years or more. The part-time employee incentive program was originally implemented as a retirement plan. Participants were required to put the funds into a 403B account or forfeit the benefit. After several years, more flexibility was permitted. Recipients can now put the money into a retirement account, purchase individual health insurance, or use the funds to supplement their income. After multiple years of frozen wages, compounded by a continuing rise in the cost of living, many employees have had to use those funds to make ends meet. Employees who are using the incentive to purchase health insurance may break even under the proposed budget, but those of us who are putting the money towards retirement or using it to supplement our meager income will sustain a significant financial setback. Another item in the proposed budget calls for $2.1 million to improve employee salaries, which no one will argue is well-deserved and long overdue. The elimination of the part-time employee incentive program creates a cost avoidance of $573,600. How in good conscience can our school division provide raises for one sector while cutting the pay of another? I will point out that last year, teachers were provided with one makeup step and one new step. Again, well deserved. My raise last year was 25 cents per hour. I'm certain that a 25% pay cut to any other sector would not be tolerated. Once again, it feels like the budget is being balanced on the backs of those who can least afford to sacrifice. Several years ago, elementary para professionals had their hours cut, eliminating our planning time on early release days for a budget savings of about $50,000 and a pay cut of several hundred dollars to each of those individuals. I realize that the Affordable Care Act mandates that employers offer their employees health insurance. I do not believe the intent of that legislation was to cause financial hardship. While it may be challenging, I believe it is the duty of the school system to comply with the law without penalizing employees. And for my other comments, one assistant who I didn't think was going to make it here tonight, but she did just walk in, she just got off of her second job. Okay, I know of one assistant who is working for below poverty level pay. I know a school nurse who does not need health insurance because she is covered by the VA Center in Salem, but she's going to have to seek a third job if her employee, part-time employee pay is eliminated. The part-time employee incentive has been a precarious budget item every year. Every year, we're waiting until August when it's approved, and I think it should have been made a permanent part of our pay long ago, rather than this being hanging over our heads every year. One offer, one suggestion I would like to offer, the Affordable Care Act says that you have to offer affordable insurance. It doesn't say you have to offer free insurance. What if every employee who is eligible for insurance paid a small premium? Couldn't the cost that you're seeking, $573,600, couldn't that be offset if each employee paid a small premium for their insurance instead of getting it for free? I don't know how many employees are eligible for insurance, and I don't know how much money that would take, but I'm thinking a $50 a month premium is very affordable for most people, and it might be enough to offset that $573,000. In addition, I would really like to see that incentive pay made a permanent part of part-time employees' pay, again, because we've had frozen salaries for so long. Thank you.
At this point, there are no other people who have signed up to speak to the board. I now open it up to anyone who's in the audience who would like to come forward and speak. If you do so, please clearly state your name and your address. Is there anyone who would like to speak to the board?
Matthew Fintris, always have to write that down. 395 Summit Ridge Road, Christiansburg, Virginia. Yesterday, it was lobby day in Richmond. I and a few other educators from our area met with Senator Edwards, Delegate Rush, Delegate Yost, and Delegate Habib's legislative aide. I've been going personally for the last few years. I find that Delegate Habib is hard to meet with, so we always meet with his legislative aide. I was just going to share a story with you. I like personal stories. So my mom gave me a bunch of papers that she had, I don't know why, and so one was about 25 years old. It was a check stub from when I was a welder, wasn't always a teacher, and so it was about take-home pay what equals what I make now, 25 years ago, what I make now, coming out of high school. And so I was trying to explain to the legislative aide, he recently got out of college, so someone who has been a teacher for about 14 years with multiple degrees and is paying student loans is now currently making what I made at Walker Muffler, Harrisonburg, Virginia, a couple hours north, as a welder. It just doesn't make sense to me, and I think I'm preaching to the choir, I mean, to you all, and I appreciate your ear, I appreciate you all listening to us. I'm sharing what I've shared, what we, me and some others, have gone to Richmond on the behalf of the Montgomery County Education Association, but also of you all as well, because I feel like your hands are often tied. We also spoke to them on the A to F grading scale, where we'll compare schools and statewide health insurance, which I think some of the folks in here have spoken about health insurance. I made a copy of something we gave the delegates and senators, if you would like a copy of that, and it talks about how we have declined in funding. We, not we, not me, not you maybe, but the state delegates. May I?
Absolutely.
Sorry about that. Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the board at this time?
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Keisha Miller. I live at 465 Wake-McCourt in Christiansburg. I'm a school bus driver for Montgomery County. I have been for, well, I've been driving a school bus for over 18 years, and this has kind of become my career, and so I'm here on behalf of myself, as well as the other school bus drivers and aides for the county, to let you know that we have listened to and read about your proposed budget plan for the 30-hour employees, as well as the 20 or below 30-hour employees, who will lose their incentive benefits, as well as the ones who will maintain to keep their benefits. The problem for that is, is as everyone else who has spoken here tonight has mentioned, is that that will put a lot of people in a financial hardship, because with the incentive bonus being available, or benefit being available for the last 15 years, several have decided to use that to supplement their income, and if that's taken away, their income will diminish greatly. Myself, well, for myself, this has become my career, and I just can't see with being at a position and a job that I love, because I love children, for close to 20 years, to have to start all over with a brand-new career if I can't afford to stay in the one that I love now. A lot of the other drivers and aides feel the same way. Some of them have already reached retirement age or moving on, or whatever the case may be, and it's really not fair for them to have to start all over again, because they can no longer make ends meet, because a part of their livelihood is going to be taken away from them. So I just ask that you please consider not taking anything out, whatever suggestions you can come up with, cut corners from here, cut corners from there, whatever's necessary, just please don't take that incentive away from any of the part-time people. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the board? Going once, going twice. Public hearing is now closed. Moving on to our next agenda item, we are to interview our candidates for the open position for District E. for District E. At this point, we only have one candidate. And is she in the room already? There she is. Would you please step up to the podium? What we're going to have you do is state your name and your address, just so we can make that establishment. And then, each board member is going to ask you a question. Board members will go in the order that they're on the sheet there. Each board member will ask you one question. You'll have ample time to answer that question. Should you be going on and on and on, I may cut you off, but we will be very respectful. At the end of this, those six questions, you will have then a period of time to address and say anything that you would like to the board. No real time constraints, but try to keep it five minutes or so, okay? With that said, go ahead and state your name and your address.
My name is Marty Graham, and I live at 4535 Long Shop Road in Blacksburg.
Okay. First question is from Ms. Franklin.
Montgomery County has a diverse student population. However, there is very little diversity within our administrative teachers, administrators, teachers, and staff. What are your thoughts on this?
Well, certainly, it would be nice for our students to see more men teachers, because, you know, they're good role models, especially for men. Because normally, it's a female population of teachers. And certainly, you know, minorities and other races, it would be great to see more of those in the school system. I don't know that I personally have an answer on how to attract those, but it would certainly be nice to see more of that for our students to have role models.
Thank you. Okay?
I've got the next question.
Okay.
Many have said that the job of a school board member is a thankless job. In reality, there are three functions school board members must perform to be effective. In your opinion, what are those three?
Well, certainly, attending the school board meetings and being prepared. Setting the policy that will allow us to provide the highest-level quality education. I also feel like a school board member needs to be able to represent their constituents, listen to their needs, and weigh those options that they come up with or, or bring to us to decide on. I also understand that you have other liaison positions, which is important to bring that information back to the school board.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Ms. Cora.
Next one is mine. "How closely have you been following the board meetings and the decisions?"
Good question. You guys have a lot going on. Certainly, the budget is obviously the big one that you're dealing with right now and will until probably around May. I certainly understand that since 2008, you've lost $10 million in your budget, which is really sad. I understand that, you know, the county has restored about $5 million of those in taxes. And then, on top of that, there's everything that gets handed down to you. The unfunded mandates, the fact that you now have to contribute to VRS, where the state did previously. And to add to that, the new health insurance changes with the Affordable Care Act is now part of that responsibility. So, going into the year, you're looking at level funding from the state, unfortunately, and possibly no additional funding from the county, which makes it a very tough position to be in. As well, another big-ticket item you have is the start time. And I've been listening to the, attending the school board meetings, listening to what the committee has to say. And I feel like, at the point that Ms. Blackburn presents that to the board, I will be able to make a, a good decision.
Thank you.
I'm next. "In your view, what has Montgomery County Public Schools done well in the past few years? And what has the school system done poorly that you'd like to change?"
Maybe I should start with poorly. Certainly, some of the things that have been mentioned here, as far as giving more attention, incentives, pay raises to those people who are really the foundation for the schools. I mean, certainly, the teachers play a very important role, but, excuse me, I know these people behind me do a lot. And we need to take care of them. Sorry. I unfortunately also think that SOLs have kind of taken over a bit too much. And I'd like to see, or I would hope to see with some of the SOL reforms, that we can get back to having field trips for students, getting them out in there and seeing things firsthand. The things that I think we've done well is that we continue to improve our schools. We look to do capital improvements that make it a safe and viable place for them, give them opportunities such as the budding STEM program, which I think will make a huge difference for a lot of our students going forward, as well as our own economy.
I have a follow-up question.
Okay.
We're neighbors, you're, you're right next door to me, and there's rumors floating out there.
Uh huh.
And one of the things that, that it says here, the system has done poorly, the rumors are that you had pulled your children out of Montgomery County Public Schools for a reason. Is that rumor, or would you care to address that issue?
I think that's a personal issue, and I would certainly address that with you personally. But I certainly don't want to embarrass my daughter. The reasons that we did that were for her own, was for her academic welfare, and they were related to the SOLs.
Okay, thank you. Simone?
Going to a little different direction. My question is, what are your thoughts on how extracurricular activities can affect student achievement?
Oh, tremendously. I think athletics, extracurricular activities like DECA, the debate teams, things like music, the arts, make a huge difference for students. They give them self-confidence, they give them a group that they are solid with, they, I think they improve academics in general, just because they feel a part of the program. And, and I'm a big fan of, especially athletics and the arts, because I think a lot of kids get the opportunity to go to college that might not have otherwise. And I think that's very important.
Okay. Stay with me, all right? Mine's a little bit long.
Okay.
Briefly describe in your own words the budget process for the Montgomery County Public School Board. What are your thoughts about a possible tax increase to help fund budget requests from the school board to the board of supervisors?
Well, I understand that you submit an initial budget, which is, is happening here very soon, to the superintendent, I mean, to the board of supervisors. They will look at what you're submitting and decide if there's additional funding that they can provide. If they can't, then it comes back, and you have to then decide where the cuts need to happen. And I understand that's a very, very difficult thing to do. That's a heavy weight to put on your shoulders. And I certainly understand, especially after listening to all this, how that will be so hard. I'm sorry, what was the rest of your question?
What are your thoughts about a possible tax increase to help fund budget requests from the school board to the board of supervisors?
That's also a hard question, because that impacts everybody in the county, a tax increase. As a, as a landowner, we have a family farm, so I would certainly take a hit on that tax increase myself. If, if they have to do that, and it helps save these people and, and provide, you know, an extra incentive to the teachers as far as a pay increase, without burdening the general population, then, then I think we should be thankful for that. But I can't comment as to whether that's a good idea or a bad idea. We just have to weigh what we get from them and decide from there.
Board members, any follow-up questions before we allow her to make a statement? Okay. The floor is yours.
Now I can talk even more. Well, as I stated, we do have a family farm. I've lived in Montgomery County for 29 years, and in the heart of District E for 24 years, where I helped to manage our family farm, and I work full-time. I understand that I am representing a very solid working-class community that is economically diverse, because I'm one of them, and my roots run deep. My daughters attended Price's Fork Elementary, Blacksburg Middle, and Blacksburg High, where I spent many years volunteering in the schools and serving in several positions on multiple parent-teacher associations, including president, newsletter editor, and treasurer. I'm a firm believer in involving and being involved in the schools, as it shows not only our children that education is important, but it shows our support to staff and teachers. I am dedicated to public education. My daughters also attended Rainbow Riders Childcare Center, and I served their PTA. So I understand the struggles of working parents and the challenges facing our childcare system, especially concerning issues such as the proposed school start time changes. I know that academic excellence must be the board's first concern, but I also understand the importance of athletics and other extracurricular activities as part of the total educational experience. Because they build teamwork skills, teach time management, and provide students with options for college they might not have had otherwise. My husband is the president of the Blacksburg High School Touchdown Club, and we have supported their efforts for many years. Of course, even though my daughters don't play football. Our daughters do participate in gymnastics and dance, so I know the value of arts education and its role in boosting academic performance and promoting a healthy lifestyle. I also understand that not every student is college-bound, and developing opportunities through the CTE programs, such as the budding STEM program, I mean, the budding STEM Academy, will be crucial for providing career pathways for many of our graduates, which will improve our local economy, and more importantly, preserve trade craft knowledge. By drawing on my many years of experience in Montgomery County Public Schools as a parent, volunteer, and advocate, combined with the life skills developed from years of running a family farm and laying down roots in my community, I feel that I have the educational experience and the physical skills needed to serve the residents of Maya District and the entire Montgomery County community. I fully support the MCPS mission and take very seriously my role in preparing our students to be responsible and productive global citizens. I welcome the opportunity to serve with all of you, and I appreciate effort, your time and effort in this important decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, we have our net, our list of meetings that are coming up, as you can see there on your iPad. We are supposed to meet on Thursday for the public hearing for the District E candidates. In light of the fact that we only have one at this point, and that we can choose to not have a public hearing, because it is optional, it is not required, I am opening up the discussion for us to possibly cancel the meeting on Thursday night, depending upon your input. Does anyone have any input or suggestions?
I would say we should have that public hearing, because this is an opportunity from, especially the, the folks in District E, to be able to tell us what they want in a school board representative. So, I believe we should have it.
I agree. If it's, since it's been scheduled, I think some people may be planning to come and speak in favor of Ms. Graham, and, or, like Ms. Franklin said, speak on who they would like to represent their district.
I also agree. I think we've got it scheduled. There may be people out there who are planning to, to come to that, so I think we should have it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think we should have it.
All right. It has been said and written. We will be here at 7:00 PM on Thursday evening for the public hearing for our District E candidate. You also see next Tuesday, our meeting on February 3rd. You see the items that are there that will include what we need to do with the budget requests that we send to the board of supervisors, and also, we will vote on the District E representative. And then, our next meeting after that will not be until February 17th. Any questions about our meetings? All right. We are now at the end. Do I have an emotion, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? We are adjourned.